I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Number two on our agenda is the invocation, and Cindy's going to do that for us.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come before you this evening with open hearts and ask that you lay wisdom on the leaders of this city and help them make decisions tonight. We thank you for coming out of the freeze as well as we did and all the blessings that you have upon the staff here at this city. We ask, Lord, that you continue to watch over the citizens and be with all of them as we go through this recovery. Be with us this evening and as we make our way through the agenda, these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Cindy. Number three is audience participation. We have it on the video screen. We want to welcome everybody online if they're watching. Number four is a consent agenda. Action Regarding Minutes, March 2, 2021. B is Action Regarding the Minutes, March 5, 2021. C is Action Regarding Minutes, March 6, 2021. D is Action Regarding Minutes, March 10, 2021. E is Action Regarding Official Appointments to the City of Fort Worth Wholesale Water and Wastewater Customer Advisory Committee for fiscal year 2021. F is Action Regarding Building Improvement Grant Agreement with Julian and Lambert Professional Photography. G is Action Regarding Retail Retention Recruitment and Development Services Proposal for the Retail Coach. And I've been asked to pull G by Cindy Big Horse. If there's anybody that wants to speak on anything, please talk to Janice. And I need to say we have a quorum present. So we'll pull G and I'll entertain a motion for the rest of the agenda.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I would like to put out that we approve the consent agenda, items A to L.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Charlie seconds. All for it, raise your hand. No against? Thank you. Okay, item number G. I guess Keith, you're on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is an item bringing to you for Retail Coach. About a year ago, a year ago and a few weeks, the council signed an agreement with Retail Coach. They help with recruitment, retention, development, and such. And then two weeks later, everything stopped with COVID. But what this is, is to renew for another year with them. When everything stopped, it tended to most, not just Saginaw, certainly not just Saginaw, but most businesses are shut, not shut down, but they slowed down their operations as far as expansion because they wanted to kind of see what would happen. Every city went through this, including Saginaw. So we kind of got off to a slow start, kind of like I became Economic Development Director and then a month later COVID happens and the city, you know, everything shuts down. So that... But I'll take the blame for that. Any questions you have?
If I remember correctly, and Gabe, you might be able to answer this, we did get an update from them, what, sometime last summer?
I believe that's correct. I think we've had two updates, and in fact, Aaron Farmer from the Retail Coach is going to come back soon and give us an update. So the extension before the council is the first of two one-year extensions for retail recruitment efforts as well as data analytics.
And I was just wondering if you might remember off the top of your head what some of their findings were?
So the good news is, you know, like Keith mentioned, COVID has kind of thrown a wrench in everything, but there's a lot of interest in Saginaw. We are close to having projects that have developable pad sites ready soon. So Aaron, working with Keith, is working on a lot of leads there. So happy to have him back here in the next few months and give an update. But market is strong, sales tax has been steady, we've seen some growth through COVID, all encouraging signs.
A year ago, the developments that we have, we have about as many as four developments going on right now, and they're all in different phases. And a year ago, we were not as far along as we are right now, which is good for us right now. Like Gabe said, the interest from businesses, restaurant and retail, has picked up quite a bit just because of the advancement of some of the developments we have and quite frankly, with things starting to open back up because of COVID.
Any other questions? Mary, Charlie, Charles? Okay, so I entertain a motion for G, please. Cindy?
Mayor, I approve that we accept action item 4G, Retail Protection Development Services for the Retail Coach.
Second, Mr. Charlie Tucker. Everybody for it? None against it? Okay. Now, at 6:06, I'm supposed to say we're in public hearing?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Correct.
Okay, so now we're going to do the Consideration and Action Regarding Resolution of the City Council of the City of Texas, Saginaw, Texas, authorizing and creating the Belt Mill Public Improvement District in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code on property consisting of approximately 380.9 acres and described as being all that certain lot track or parcel of land situated in the heirs of Benjamin Thomas Survey, abstract number 1497, City of Saginaw, Tarrant County, Texas, and being part of that certain called 380.9 acre tract of land described indeed in favor of CFI Farm Properties LLC, resolution number 2021-10. And this is Gabe and Bren.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council. This item before you this evening is to create Belt Mill Public Improvement District. So Belt Mill Development was formerly the Cran's Farm property. It's approximately 380 acres, 115 of those are in Saginaw city limits. So the applicant is here, Don Allen with Lackland Holdings, if he wants to speak. Certainly like to hear from him. So where we're at right now is there's a lot of preliminary engineering going on. Probably some of the first things you'll see in the development is the future thoroughfare Belt Mill Parkway, which the Public Improvement District, once it's created, will fund some of those Public Improvement Districts. So just for the benefit of the public, the PID financing is used to pay for public infrastructure in a designated area, which is the bounds of this district, and it's done so that that doesn't burden taxpayers outside of that district. So there'll be in the future an assessment on properties within Belt Mill, and that assessment will be used to pay for debt for streets, parks, and other amenities that will come as part of a future project plan. So city attorney is nodding, which is generally a good sign. I'll defer to him if there's any other information. And if you have any questions, Mr. Allen from Lackland Holdings is here.
That's right. I don't have much to add. This was originally scheduled for the meeting, we had to cancel because of the storm. We weren't able to push this three days later to the Friday meeting because we advertised for that Tuesday meeting. So it's somewhat delayed, but you all are familiar with the process now. But I'm happy to answer questions if there are any.
Do we have any questions? Mary? Cindy? Charlie? Charles? None? Okay, so now we just need to entertain a motion?
So we have the public hearing open. We just need to ask if anyone would like to speak and then close the public hearing?
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak in the public hearing?
Just as a courtesy as much as anything, my name is Don Allen. I'm with Lackland Holdings. We are the developer of the Belt Mill project. As Mr. Meredith and Gabe expressed, we had a meeting last month that Mother Nature had other plans. So with the noticing and everything, you have to do it according to the rules, and so had to delay it to this meeting, but we're here today. And this is just the first step. This just creates things now, and we're already in the process of kind of working out the details on all the various elements that will be included. I don't want to take any more of your time, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you for your consideration.
Okay, Mary has a question.
Assuming everything goes, you know, quickly or, you know, there's no holdups that are unforeseen, when do you think you might be able to break ground?
We plan on actually breaking ground very shortly. We already have infrastructure plans for Belt Mill Parkway, which is the spine road and the ponds out front and things like that. We've already submitted infrastructure plans once to the city for review, have gotten review comments, are working through those between our engineer and city staff and city consultants. So as soon as we get comments addressed and back into the city, I actually plan on putting Belt Mill Parkway at the bed here within the next 30 days. So we plan on moving, and that's kind of the spine road that delivers the road, that delivers the drainage improvements, that delivers the water, the sewer, et cetera, to the various parcels that we have, and we have had a lot of interest. Obviously, the retail, as Mr. Reinhardt said, it retails a little slower right now, but it's not dead. They're just, it's taken them a while to see what things are, but what they need are rooftops. You know, more rooftops, you know, will generate that retail, and we're very bullish about it, you know? I mean, and we've had a great interest in everything so far. And I think we'll be back here before you, probably within the next couple of months, maybe with a zoning case that impacts one or multiple of our sites as far as just tweaking the zoning. But the main thing is just, you know, we'll have site plans, we'll have users, we'll be ready to move forward. So we've got a lot of interest, and we're trying to move quickly to address that interest and take advantage of the market while it's here.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, sir, very much. Now entertain a motion?
So we close the public hearing?
At 6:12, we'll close the public hearing.
And then entertain a motion.
Okay, now entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we approve, we approve the consideration and actions for creating the public, the Belt Mill Public Improvement District in accordance to Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code.
In a second. Charlie Tucker. Everybody for it? Okay, none against? Okay, item number six is a consideration and action regarding an escrow agreement binding between Belt Mill Saginaw LLC, the City of Saginaw, Texas, and the city attorney as escrow agent, governing terms and conditions for the filing of a petition for dissolution of the Belt Mill Public Improvement District. Again, Gabe, Bren.
Mayor Protem and Council, this escrow agreement is for the purposes of the planning phase of the creation of the PID. So the developer is putting some money up front to pay for staff time and Bren's time as we work through these plans in preparation for the future creation of the PID and funding projects. So with that, be happy to answer any questions, or Bren be happy to. I think there's some language about the dissolution as well. Bren, may.
That's right. This is primarily involving the dissolution in the event that development does not go forward. Because the only way you can dissolve the PID is pursuant to the same process that it was created by, which is by written request from the owner of the property. So this is a written request by the owner of the property to dissolve the PID. However, it's not being filed with the city, it's just simply being held in escrow. So in the event that we have not amended the development agreement within eight months of this date to address all of the infrastructure issues and amenities, public amenities, or in the event that there is not a contract to construct the public improvements signed by the owner of the property within 18 months of this agreement, if either of those two triggers are not met, then the dissolution petition will be filed with the council. Obviously, you're not required to dissolve the PID if there are extenuating circumstances, et cetera. It just simply holds it in escrow in the event that we do want to dissolve it.
Okay. Any questions, consultants? Nothing? Okay, so they just got to make a motion?
Yes, then there's no public hearing for this item.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we approve the escrow agreement for the Belt Mill PID as presented.
I'll second.
Charles, did you say you seconded?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, you seconded. Everybody for it, raise your hand. Against it? None? All for it. Okay, item number seven, we're going to recess into a workshop. Item number eight, Sister City Presentation, Abdullah Jarju is going to come up and give us a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abdullah Jarju. I'm an administrative intern at the City of Saginaw and also MPA student at the University of North Texas. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Protem and Council for allowing me to give this presentation. I would also like to thank the city manager and assistant city manager for making this a possibility for me to present this. Saginaw and Banjo presentation, which is going to be about sisterhood, as we call it, where we will have a relationship between the two cities and we can help each other in many positive ways. So why a sister city? There's so many advantages when cities or communities come together. The first one that I want to discuss is the increased citywide awareness. I remember before I left Africa, I didn't even know nothing about the outside wall. I didn't know what it looks like or, you know, all I know is I'll see people coming from different countries and then coming to Gambia, exposed to my culture, but I've never been exposed to their culture. And once I left Africa, you know, I realized there's more to the world, you know, and understand that having people experience other people's culture can make a great impact on people's life. So I think this will be a great opportunity if Banjo and Saginaw do indeed become sister cities. I think it will benefit both cities. Another thing I want to talk about is the educational partnership and developments that would help both cities, which will be having students coming from Banjo and students coming from Saginaw, where they can exchange information and get to learn about each other's lives. There's also tourism, Gambia, Banjo, well from a small city, about 34,000 people. It's well-known for its beaches, and we have people coming from Europe and America between October all the way till April, when it's cold out here, to enjoy the sunny weather in Gambia. I think this will be able to, we'll be able to educate the people in Saginaw about some of those qualities that they will be able to fly out to Gambia and enjoy, especially if they are connected in that kind of relationship, which is sisterhood. Another thing we can also share, business and, like I said, education and technology, we can do all that. Raising international profile for cities, like, because every city is unique in its way. I remember before I started working in Saginaw, I didn't know where Saginaw was until I was called for an interview here. When I came, some of the things that the city manager, you know, discussed with me, I was like, whoa, this is a city that is on the, is moving on the horizon. There's so many economic development going on, and it's quite interesting. So coming from a city that hasn't grown to that magnitude, I think it will be a great opportunity for my city to learn from that city and find ways of how they can move forward. Africa, Banjo, Gambia is the smallest nation in the entire Africa region. If you look at the map there, you can see the Gambia, the Arab, it's a small, tiny nation. It's like a nation inside another nation. Yeah. And that's Senegal. Senegal surrounded Gambia on all three sides, and the last side that's left is the Atlantic Ocean. So where is the Gambia? Like I said, it's in West Africa, surrounded by Senegal, like it says. It is also, it has a nickname where, you know, people around the world will call the Gambia the smiling coast of Africa. You know, I used to wonder why it's smiling coast, but it is where the river and the sea meet, where they met. You can, you can see that, it looks like a smiling face. Yeah, so it is beautiful, and I get so happy when I hear people saying smiling coast of Africa. And Banjo is the capital. Like I said, 34,000 people. On the next slide, that's what Banjo looks like. I can say I've been around every corner while I was in Gambia. That's where I was born and attended middle school, high school there. It is a very unique city where you have Christians and Muslims living together, and I can say it is one of the most peaceful countries in Africa. I grew up Muslim, but I attended a Christian missionary school, Boys High School, which is quite often in Gambia. It is one of the places where you will see Muslims celebrating Christmas more than Christians. So if you do have the experience, the opportunity to go out there, especially in December, you will see that. You'll be like, what's going on? It's Christmas, but Muslims are out on the street having fun. I would like to show you guys a 1 minute 11 seconds video to show you like an insight of how things work in Gambia. Please enjoy. The next slide here, what I want to talk about is the weather in Gambia. This is funny, I'm laughing because when I left Africa and went to the UK, it was around January when it was raining, and I called my mom, I'm like, Mom, you know, what are you doing? I'm at home, I can't go nowhere, it's raining. She's like, raining? I'm like, yeah. The reason why that's funny is, Gambia, we have only two forms of weather, the wet and dry one. And it only rains between June all the way to around September. So that's the only time we will see rain. Besides that, we don't see any rain. So telling someone who's in Africa that it's raining out here or it's snowing, they're like, whoa, that's weird. But that's Gambia, so like I said, when it's cold, colder in Europe and America, people will visit. From the picture above there, you know, you can see a gentleman walking on the beach, enjoying himself, and then you can see the tourists on the low beach. But it never snows in Gambia. What kind of food the people of Gambia eat? Of course, our meals are different from here, the ones that I expose here. I have a little story when it comes to that as well. I've never had McDonald's before when I was in Gambia. So when I went to the UK, I think the first time I had McDonald's, I'm like, I can eat this every day. Yeah. But it didn't work that way. Like you see now, I'm okay. But like you said, the top picture right there, that's peanut butter soup, we call it damada, is basically made out of peanut butter. You can make it with chicken or meat, not use fish because it won't work, but it's really delicious. I was telling Gabe, actually, I was like, hmm, I should have brought some Gambia food to make everybody to try it, you know? And yeah, next time. And then the picture right there, that's what we call benachin. So every Gambia household that you go, regardless of what tribe you belong to, knows how to make that. Damada and benachin are one of the, you know, my favorite meals besides okra soup. And the type, we also have like local juices that we drink, like wanjou, it's kind of like bread, it comes from a plant where, you know, you dry the leaves and then they make really good juice out of it. Yeah, it's kind of like similar to Kool-Aid here. Yeah, anybody can afford it, even if you're poor. If you can pay for it, you can like cultivate it. And school in Gambia, this is exactly, as I said, quite similar to what I, what I experienced while I was going to school in Gambia. Most of our schools is just like a empty room. We don't have windows, so they make holes in the walls so, you know, we can let that ventilate in there. The schools are mostly crowded, or most children are not able to go to school because their parents cannot afford school for them. So you end up seeing a lot of kids on the street like that you saw on the video because of the poverty rating in their country. Everyone wears a uniform, regardless of you coming from a rich or poor background, it doesn't matter, you have to wear a uniform. And there's long walks to school, I remember. I live in a street in Banjo called Tobakoro, and my school was all the way in Hagan, which is about 35-minute walking distance. And I used to do that every day, me and my siblings. Not only that, our friends as well, we all walk together to school and back. Great exercise. The schools, we have field books. I remember, you know, books are like costly, you know, parents can't afford it, and this is why I have been working and dedicating my life to make it so, to give an opportunity to other people out there so they can read. Because I know through education, we will be able to fight poverty and eradicate it in our societies. The languages that are spoken in Gambia, they, we have 13 local languages, 13 ethnic groups, as I said. I belong to the Mandinka tribe. We are the largest in the population of Gambia. But most people know how to speak more than one or two, more than two languages. Like myself here, I can speak two local languages, Mandinka and Wolap, and I can also grade in three other languages. I can hold a little conversation with people, but I know some who can speak seven languages and they're super fluent in it. So Gambia, even those, some other countries in Africa, like for example Nigeria... like for example Nigeria, that has over two hundred and fifty local languages. So we, we are still unique in our own way. Uh, this is the building to, uh, the top building right there, that's the city council, Banjul City Council. Uh, it is located in the center, in the center of, by the center of, uh, Banjul Central. Uh, the lady to the right is Rahim Ali Glow. She is the current mayor of the city. And she is so excited, uh, about this project and she's looking forward to it. And the man next to her is Prince Charles from the UK, from the royal family. Banjul, this will be a great opportunity, uh, for Banjul and for Sagan as well because they haven't both experienced sister city, you know, to that capacity. So if this do go through, this will be a great opportunity for both cities to engage in. Now, ways that you can help, uh, to contribute to, uh, changing people's lives, I think, you know, if you have time to read more books about other countries, really, uh, be open-minded. I think that will be a great, uh, uh, way of helping to grow, uh, communities and cities around the world. Uh, raise money for books, you know, for Africa or charities, nonprofits, that's another important thing. Uh, if you have time, you know, you have the time, it will also be great to learn a language, another, another language, uh, you know, like Spanish or French or anything like that. Uh, we can also host, uh, uh, student exchange. I think that's another important thing. That's all I have for you guys. I really want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. And, uh, great night, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It sounds very interesting.
Yeah. So next steps, Mayor Protem Council, if, um, to move forward, there will, um, will be a resolution where we formally acknowledge Banjul as a sister city. Um, Abdallah's had some conversations with Mayor Lowe, so they're very excited. In fact, we're going to try to do a, a meeting, uh, through WhatsApp to get to know each other. And, uh, you may recall, unfortunately, um, we, we tried to create a sister city, uh, previously in Myanmar, and the circumstances there are very difficult. So, um, this opportunity kind of came unexpectedly. And thankfully Abdallah, uh, is our in-house, uh, Gambian expert. He also, uh, uh, he didn't tell you this, but he, uh, was in the Grenadier Guards in the United Kingdom. So he's city hall, uh, bodyguard. Um, so in addition to Saganaw's finest PD, but no, we're very excited. We plan on bringing a resolution to you in the future. And, uh, we would like to invite Mayor Lowe to the Training Grain Festival.
Yeah.
And maybe next year, we have someone from Saganaw visit, uh, the Gambia. We would like to just continue to be friends and, um, uh, send books and maybe do student exchanges and just have fun, enjoy each other's company through Abdallah and another intern. Um, there are a number of, um, immigrants, recent immigrants from African nations in DFW. So, um, it's neat. Uh, they're, they're, you know, the, the world is a big, exciting place. So we're really happy to, to maybe pursue this and, um, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Comments?
I do. Do you mind if I call you AJ? Okay. Well, thank you. That's a lot easier for me. Um, okay. So my mom is from, uh, South Louisiana. And I noticed y'all had some alligator there. Do y'all ever eat those?
Yes. Uh, we have this place that is like, uh, twelve minutes drive from Banjul, from the capital. Uh, and it's called, uh, Kachikali, uh, Bakaw Kachikali. They have a crocodile pool there. And if, most tourists that go to Gambia, foreigners that go to Gambia, that's one of the, 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 the places that they love to go to because you can interact with the crocodiles. You can touch them. And it's a whole bunch of them in the water. So, so that's a great experience. Yeah, we do have them there.
Yeah. They're excellent on the grill, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, very good. And I just want to let you know, I certainly sympathize with your hardships of having to walk to school. But in Texas, every old timer walks uphill ten miles to school and walks ten miles uphill back home. So. And it's all a lie, but that's what we say.
Yes.
But I'd like to talk with you a little bit after the meeting, if you have a few minutes.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie. Oh, Mary.
Um, I think you mentioned that the schools are, you have to pay to go to school? There are no free public schools?
There are, uh, free public schools, but, uh, due to the size, not everybody can go. So sometimes you have to wait. Like here in the United States, people have to, actually about, by the time you're seven years old, you know, you are enrolled in school. And so over there, it is harder. There are some places where schools are full, filled always. So you get, you have to wait.
So they don't have room for all the children that want, that are able, the right age to go, they don't have enough room?
Yeah.
For all of them?
Yeah.
Even if they go half a day, there's still not room for everybody?
No, they don't. They don't. And there's plenty of land, but the funding is not there to open more schools. So you, sometimes the crowds will be crowded. Uh, uh, one part that I forgot to mention was that when, from primary one all the way to primary six, when, when school closes, when the time closes, every student has to carry their table and chair on their head and walk all the way home.
Wow.
I've done it. Yeah, I've done it. Grade one to six. And, uh, when you go to middle school, it changes. But from grade one to six, we've, we've done that. You will see a whole bunch of kids on the street with this, you know?
Tapes.
Uh, when, when school closes, you take it home. When it opens, you take the same one. That's, yeah.
Okay. All right. You win now.
And, um, how long have you been in the United States?
Uh, the United States, I've been here eight years now.
Eight years?
Eight, yeah.
Okay.
Eight going towards nine. Yeah.
Okay.
Been here a while. Yeah. And also, uh, the Gambia, our official language is English. So that to make it a lot easier for the people of Saganaw to interact with the people of Banjul, because there won't be that much of a language barrier. So communication will be a lot easier.
Pretty neat.
Anyone got any more questions for me?
Charlie? Well, thank you very much. It's very interesting.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. AJ, yeah. Okay. So at six thirty-eight, we reconvene back into regular ser- session. And we have an executive session, right? So.
So it's pursuant to section five five one point oh eight seven of the Texas Government Code. We convene into executive session.
Okay. Do I have to hit this?
You, well, that's up to you.
Okay, okay. So we'll go to the executive session and then we'll come back and adjourn. Right? Okay.
...